Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the January 28, 2019 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. This time I would ask to please silence any electronic devices that hum, beep, talk, yell. And we also would ask you that if you need to make a phone call, please exit the chambers and make it in the hallway. If for some reason during the meeting an emergency should arise, please exit the chamber in an orderly manner, make a right-hand turn, go to the end of the hall and down the stairs. If that exit is blocked for some reason, please make a left and a right and go down the stairs. If you need assistance, please ask and it will be provided to you. Thank you for your attention. And just an announcement that immediately following the legislative session this evening, we will have a special work session. And that will begin promptly after the meeting is adjourned. At this point, I'd like to invite Reverend John Wright of the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship at Salisbury to lead us in the invocation. Good evening Reverend Wright.
Good evening, and thank you so much for allowing me to be here this evening. I invite you all to please join me in a moment of prayer. God of all creation, source of all, we the children of many traditions, inheritors of shared wisdom and tragic misunderstandings, of proud hopes and humble successes, call upon your presence in this gathering this evening. Let us begin in gratitude, thankful for this beautiful world of ours, this nation, this city, and the myriad freedoms we enjoy because many brave men and women fought, lived, and died for them. Let us be grateful for health, for friends and family, memory and truth, courage and trust, love and promise, and for the gift of being together this evening. Many are our traditions, but we are one in our longing for peace and justice. May we find within ourselves and in one another a reflection of the divine. May these our representatives be ever mindful that theirs is sacred work. May they find strength in their resolve to serve our city to the very best of their ability. May they find joy, fulfillment, and success in their service. And may their work be guided by wisdom, compassion, productivity, respect for the people they serve, and for one another. Let us also honor those city employees who so diligently work to help keep our lives safe, productive, and healthy. May they find joy in knowing that they are seen and that their work is deeply appreciated. And finally, may each of us throughout our lives find ever more ways to remain trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. I ask these things in the names of the Holy God, Great Spirit, Yahweh, Allah, first cause and the many, many names humans have used to invoke the sacred. Shalom, salam. Blessed be. Amin and amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Wright, appreciate it. Please rise now and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Little change of procedure here. Usually this is the time when we make presentations from the city to individuals. Tonight, we have consultant Jeff Perkins from Legit, Loss Control Consultant, and he has a presentation to make to the mayor.
First of all, I just want to thank everyone for having us tonight and also want to give a big thank you to the city for being a member of the Local Government Insurance Trust. We are a trust. The only members we can have are local governments in the state of Maryland, and we consider the city of Salisbury to be a very important part of that. So, thanks for having us. Main reason I'm here is to present an award to Frank Ennis, who's done a great job working with the Department of Field Operations, correct? Field Operations. And just going to kind of give you some background on what the award is and why the city's got it and some of the good things that the city's been doing. And mainly, this is because of Frank's hard work. So, first of all, the Risk Management Award is given to our members that consistently demonstrate excellence in committing itself to loss reduction, ongoing training, adhering to Legit's risk management guidelines, and using Legit's resources. One of the main markers that you need to achieve to basically be able to receive the Risk Management Award is scoring 100 percent on your loss control primary credit survey, which basically is a bunch of guidelines or bullet points or things that we find are very important for local governments to do on a risk management and, you know, to keep from lawsuits and things like that. And basically, this city scored 100 percent on that. And that's why Frank was... One of the things that Frank has done to basically be able to receive this award, by receiving the award, one of the great things is that the city was able to receive over $14,000 back, has a premium credit for the 2019 fiscal year, which we are in now. And some other good stuff, just to holler out about Frank's hard work and all the good stuff the city's doing, is since November 8, 2018, the Department of Field Operations staff has worked 226 consecutive days, or that's over 97,000 person-hours without a recordable incident or accident, which is quite a quite achievement. You know, I've worked with many towns across the state that don't have nearly the amount of employees you guys have that don't have stats like that. So, that is quite an achievement. Some of the other good stuff is you guys have been a member for 32 years, which means that Salisbury was a founding member of Legit. So, when we were founded by the state in 1987, Salisbury joined with us. And again, we're glad that you guys have stayed with us and have been a great member for us. So, that's 32 years that you guys have been with Legit. Since Frank has taken over, not only have you guys got back over that $14,000, but Frank basically through his hard work has been able to get you credits over $24,000 back to all the different lines of coverage that basically we offer for you guys. Worked with Frank for many years. He handles all things Legit, and I'm very lucky to have him as a contact, and I believe the city is very lucky to have him as an employee. And anytime I do my visits and we're going out and looking at the facilities, which you guys have a bunch of great facilities, you know, if very little is ever found, which means that Frank and the city is very on top of their safety and their risk management, which is really important these days because we do live in a quite, I'll call it judicial society. So, other than that, basically just want to thank Frank and the city for their hard work and dedication, working with Legit, and just to basically keep it up. And at this time, I'll go ahead and give Frank this Risk Management Services Award. I will present this one to the mayor. This is just to basically make sure that you guys know that you've been a member for 32 years and that we are happy and proud to have you for the past 32 years.
I've been alive for all of you.
And again, Frank, you guys are very lucky to have Frank. Can I just add that Frank has become our Safety Officer citywide, and we are so proud of that work. You know, I didn't realize exactly the specs on what an impact it's had, but really incredible. So, Frank, thank you to the entire Field Operations Department and all the work that you've done and added. And, you know, we are proud members of Legit. I get to see members of your team up in Annapolis all the time. We're always grateful when you're down here with us, too.
Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you.
That is a significant milestone. Wish my plants used to have that, would have that kind of record. That's excellent. Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So move.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Mr. Iarton?
Second.
Ms. Jackson?
Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the December 3, 2018 work session minutes and closed session minutes, the December 10 regular meeting minutes, and the December 17 work session minutes and closed session minutes. We have Resolution Number 2905 approving the appointment of Matthew Heim to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for term ending January 2022, and that's it.
Okay. Any comments? Hearing non, I'll call the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. Is Matthew here this evening? Is Matthew Heim? Just want to recognize him and thank him for volunteering and being a part of that important committee. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So move.
Second. Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Good evening, Ms. Miller. How are you?
Great. Good evening. I do love a Board of Bids night because it's the culmination of a lot of hard work. Five items this evening. The first item is the Award of Bid for RFP 12-17, the Guaranteed Energy Savings Performance Contract. Our department, Department of Procurement, received a request from the Administrative Office to solicit proposals from qualified and experienced firms to perform an investment-grade energy audit, an IGA, that would propose energy conservation measures to be implemented and achieved through guaranteed savings provisions of a guaranteed energy savings performance contract. The driving force behind the GESP initiative was the Salisbury Police Department Headquarters Building, where a significant capital investment is necessary to replace an end-of-life HVAC system, which includes a chiller, cooling tower, and an air handling unit. The city followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times, posting the solicitation on the city of Salisbury's procurement portal, and advertising on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. Six vendors submitted proposals by the due date and time of June 23, 2017, and three were qualified for interviews and submittal of best and final pricing. Those vendors, the scores, and the best and final pricing is noted in your packet. Note that the pricing comparison included the price for the investment-grade audit fee, the project management fee, and the M&amp;V services fee. In December 2017, the city awarded a portion of contract RFP 12-17 to Honeywell Building Solutions Energy Services Group to perform an investment-grade audit. Honeywell has since completed the IGA by performing building surveys, conducting site visits, and preparing a comprehensive street lighting inventory of city-owned fixtures. Additionally, they have generated and presented ECM or Energy Conservation Measure reviews at the 30%, 60%, and 90% levels, and in early December 2018, met with city staff for a presentation of the final project and open book pricing. A summary of the project is in your council packet. The total project, as previously discussed, is $1,722,689. With the scope of work and cost negotiations now finalized, the city desires to enter into a guaranteed savings energy performance contract with Honeywell Building Solutions. We request council's approval of award in the amount of $1,722,689 upon council consent of Budget Amendment Ordinance 2521, which provides the funding for this project.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. Oh, I'm sorry. You have four more.
Four more.
Go right ahead.
The next item is Award of Bid for ITB or Invitation to Bid 19-115. It's a side loader refuse truck. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Field Operations to purchase a side loader rapid rail 22-yard, excuse me, 22 cubic yard dump truck. It's a Hio body and Peterbilt chassis through Mid-Atlantic Waste Systems utilizing a contract secured by Sourcewell, formerly called National Joint Powers Alliance, Contract Number 112014-THC. Per Section SC 16-3, General Policy of Competitive Bidding Exceptions of the City of Salisbury Charter, competitive bidding procedures performed by the city of Salisbury are not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstance: Contracts in which the city receives a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract. This charter designation allows the city of Salisbury to participate in cooperative purchasing activities conducted by or on behalf of one or more public procurement units as defined by the American Bar Association Model Procurement Code for State and Local Governments. Sourcewell was created by state law as a service cooperative and is authorized to establish competitively awarded cooperative purchasing contracts on behalf of itself and its member agencies in education and government. It is a local government unit, public corporation, and public agency pursuant to the Minnesota Constitution and Enabling Law, Minnesota Statute, Section 123A21. Sourcewell follows the competitive contracting laws to solicit, evaluate, and award cooperative purchasing contracts for goods and services, and these contracts are then made available through the joint exercise of powers law, Minnesota Statute, Section 471.59, to member agencies, of which the city of Salisbury has been a longstanding member with the former National Joint Powers Alliance. The Department of Procurement has confirmed with Sourcewell the validity of the contract, including the terms, pricing, and expiration date, and the prices quoted by Mid-Atlantic are in accordance with the Sourcewell contract prices. Since neither Hio nor Peterbilt sell direct, purchases are made through its dealer network, such as Mid-Atlantic Waste Systems. There are sufficient funds in Account 32061-577025, which is the vehicle account for waste collection. The Department of Procurement requests council's approval to award contract ITB 19-115 to Mid-Atlantic Waste Systems in the amount of $279,864.16.
Any questions?
And Field Operations is getting a second item. That's Award of Bid ITB 19-114. It's the 2019 Timco Street Sweeper. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Field Operations to purchase a 2019 Timco Street Sweeper through Timco utilizing Cooperative Purchasing Program, HGAC Buy. Per Section SC 16-3, General Policy of Competitive Bidding Exceptions, competitive bidding procedures performed by the city of Salisbury are not necessary or appropriate when we can receive a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity. Therefore, this allows the city of Salisbury to participate in cooperative purchasing activities, such as HGAC Buy. The Houston-Galveston Area Council, or HGAC, is a unit of local government and a political subdivision of the state of Texas. All products offered through HGAC Buy have been awarded by virtue of a public competitive process. The contracts awarded by the HGAC Buy board are then made available to local governments nationwide through the HGAC Buy Cooperative Purchasing Program. The city of Salisbury has previously purchased items from this program through the execution of an inter-local contract, which sets out the conditions, requirements, and processes of the procurement. The Procurement Division has verified the contract pricing, terms, and conditions with a representative from HGAC Buy, and it is in reference to Contract Number SW04-18. And upon council approval of Ordinance 2520 for a budget amendment, there will be sufficient funds in Account 60820-577025, it's a vehicles account, to purchase the requested truck. The Procurement Department requests council's approval to award this contract to Timco in the amount of $245,575.
Any questions? Your Honor will...
Great. All right. The next item is the Award of Bid for Contract ITB or Invitation to Bid 19-108. That's the Parking Garage Structural Rehabilitation. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit bids for qualified and experienced contractors to make structural repairs to the city parking garage. The city followed standard bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times, posting the solicitation on the city of Salisbury's procurement portal, notifying the city's bidder list, and advertising on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. Six vendors submitted a bid by the due date and time of January 3, 2019, at 2:30 p.m., with Queen Construction Incorporated submitting the lowest responsible and responsive bid. The bid pricing, which I did not reiterate in my page, is referenced in the departmental memo. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award this contract to Queen Construction in the amount of $156,409, which includes all structural repairs noted in the solicitation, plus one contingent item, which is the cleaning of floor drain piping on all levels of the garage structure. Funding is available in the FY 19 Parking Capital Project Account.
Any questions?
I was just going to ask, in reading it, I kind of got overhead floor repair, which seemed like it couldn't be possible, but I guess it is. But further on, you have teeth, overhead floor repair. I was just trying to figure out which way I was supposed to look. The galvanic anode installation, I'll just say to you, some of this looks like it's writing in a different language, and I was just trying to get some clarification as to what some of these things were. Do you know what they are? You do?
The floor, the ceiling.
Well, yeah.
Mr. Councilman, I mean, we can bring a man up to explain, but I would just say that I don't know what any of those things are, but all of them are part of what was reported to the council about the condition of the...
We discussed this in the past year.
But I don't know specifically...
How did I know her number?
I just want to get the...
It was a thrilling presentation on the structural...
Yeah, I still got the packet at home that's about to stick. Do you want a man?
No, that's fine. If you all know what galvanic anode installation is, I'll take your word for it.
Let the record reflect it. I don't...
An anode nadiode.
All right.
I could tell you anything. Just do it.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
The last item is the Award for Contract ITB 19-116. It's the CDBG Neighborhood Sidewalk Construction. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit bids for qualified and experienced contractors to furnish all labor, material, and equipment necessary for the construction of sidewalk, curb, and gutter in the CDBG target areas. CDBG standing for Community Development Block Grant. The city followed standard bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times, posting on the city of Salisbury's procurement portal, and advertising on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. Three vendors submitted a bid by the due date and time of January 10, with ECM Corporation submitting the lowest responsive and responsible bid. Now, the bid prices that I noted in your packet were based on estimated quantities needed to complete curb, gutter, and sidewalk repairs in the Church Street Doverdale neighborhood, and that's really for big comparison purposes only. But due to the favorable unit prices received as a result of this competitive bid, the city will be able to utilize the CDBG grant funds to complete additional work in those target areas. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award a contract for this project to ECM Corporation in the amount of $135,443.72, which is the current amount of funding available in the account noted in your packet. So, we'll get to award what's in the fund.
Any questions? Is there a way to quantify how much more we got because of that?
We can give you linear...
I don't need to... Just I'd be curious to see what...
So, we were about...
It's very rare you get the information that you're going to get more than you.
About $20,000 more than we were expecting.
Fantastic. Fantastic. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Miller. All those in favor of the Award of Bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2906.
So move.
Second. Mr. Boda, Mr. Iarton. Good evening, Miss Glance.
Good evening, council. Before you, is a resolution of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, accepting an ice skating rink and associated supplies, as well as a monetary donation in exchange for naming rights to the Riverwalk Amphitheater and Ice Skating Rink from Pohanka of Salisbury. Whereas, the council of the city of Salisbury is interested in supporting the acceptance of a donation from a local business, Pohanka of Salisbury, Inc., for the operation of a seasonal ice skating rink and supplies associated with the rink. Whereas, Pohanka of Salisbury, Inc. desires to donate supplies to funding the city totaling $100,000 in exchange for having its business name affiliated with the city of Salisbury Riverwalk Amphitheater and Seasonal Skating Rink. And whereas, terms and conditions of the donation are contained in the memorandum of understanding, which the mayor is authorized to sign with Pohanka of Salisbury, Inc.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 2906, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2581 for the second reading.
So move.
Second. Ms. Jackson, Mr. Iarton.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay. All right. This is Ordinance Number 2518, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $25,000, authorizing the mayor to enter into a sub-precipient agreement with the Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District Incorporated in approving a budget amendment to the FY 2019 Grant Fund to appropriate funds for the 2019 National Folk Festival. Whereas, the Department of Housing and Community Development has an operating assistance grant program, and whereas the purpose of the grant is to provide financial assistance to carrying out community development activities, and whereas the city of Salisbury has committed to hosting the 2018 through 2020 seasons of the National Folk Festival in order to celebrate our community's local heritage, culture, and art, and whereas the city of Salisbury submitted a grant application for fundings to DHCD to support the 2019 National Folk Festival, and whereas DHCD has awarded the city funds in the amount of $25,000, and whereas all funds shall be used to support costs associated with the office expenses and event coordinators and activities associated with each coordinator's responsibilities related to the 2019 National Folk Festival, and whereas the city has designated Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District as its financial agency for the 2018 through 2020 National Folk Festivals, and whereas the city is sub-granting the award of $25,000 to the Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District, and whereas the city must enter into a sub-precipient agreement with the Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District defining how these funds must be expended, and whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter forbids contracts requiring an expenditure in excess of the amount appropriated for that general classification or expenditure, and forbids any office, department, or agency from expending funds not appropriated, and whereas appropriations necessary... whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purposes of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury that the council hereby authorizes Mayor Jacob R. Day to enter into a grant agreement with the Maryland Department of Planning for acceptance of these funds, and be it further ordained that the council of the City of Salisbury authorizes the mayor to negotiate and enter into a subrecipient agreement with Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District for the purpose of expending those funds. And be it ordained that the city's fiscal year 2019 grant budget is hereby amended as follows, with an increase in the 2019 TAG grant revenue account by $25,000, and an increase in the subrecipient Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District account by an equivalent amount.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2518, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2519 for the second reading.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Rudisil. Mr. Tillman.
Ordinance number 2519, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury granting a utility easement to Delmarva Power and Light Company across city-owned property being portions of the alleyway located off Baptist Street and running along the northerly side of the city parking garage, whereas the city owns all that real property described in Item 1, and Item 2 set forth in Schedule A of the utility easement by between the City of Salisbury and Delmarva Power and Light Company's utility easement attached to this ordinance, and whereas the redevelopment of the property at 132 East Main Street by First Move Properties, LLC, necessitates the burying of existing aerial electrical facilities located on the city-owned property, more particularly described in Item 1 and Item 2 set forth in Schedule A of the attached utility easement, and whereas before commencing work to bury such existing aerial electrical facilities, Delmarva Power and Light has requested the City of Salisbury to enter into the utility easement attached here too, granting Delmarva Power the right to construct, operate, and maintain the infrastructure associated with the electrical facilities that will be buried by Delmarva Power in connection with First Move's redevelopment of 132 East Main Street. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury that the city allows Delmarva Power to construct, operate, and maintain the electrical facility infrastructure located on and within real property described in Schedule A of the utility easement by between Delmarva Power and Light Company and the City of Salisbury attached here too, and that the mayor is authorized to execute the attached utility easement for and on behalf of the city. The rest of it, I mean, it's been read before, standard language, and basically it will be put in the ground and restored to its useful condition.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2519 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2520 for the second reading.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Ierton. Mr. Tillman.
Ordinance number 2520, an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of FY 2019 Stormwater Fund to appropriate funds for a new street sweeper, whereas the city has projected the amount to purchase a new street sweeper for FY 2019, and whereas the City of Salisbury indicates that an increase of $24,250 in FY19 appropriations is needed in the street sweeping vehicles account in order to meet a change in emission requirements from a Tier 3 engine to a Tier 4 engine, and whereas the appropriations must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury, now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the council of the City of Salisbury, that the city's fiscal year 2019 Stormwater Fund budget be amended as follows: increase current year surplus by $24,250, increase the street sweeping account by an equivalent amount.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2520 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2521 for the second reading.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the city's general capital project fund and water sewer capital project fund to appropriate funding for Honeywell Building Solutions Energy Savings Projects, whereas the city has determined that improvements to the HBA system are required at the Salisbury Police Department building, and whereas the city has determined that investment in the conversion of various buildings and street lighting to LED lighting will save the city energy costs over time, whereas the city has reviewed a guaranteed energy savings performance contract proposal from Honeywell Building Solution, and says determine that entering into an agreement with them to deliver these solutions is beneficial to the city, and whereas the city's capital project budgets do not contain an appropriation sufficient to fund the award of the contract to Honeywell Building Solutions to fund the projects described in the attached Schedule B and Schedule C, and whereas Section 7-29 of the City Charter forbids contracts requiring an expenditure in excess of amounts appropriated for that general classification or expenditure, and forbids any office, department, or agency from expending funds not appropriated, and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purposes of this contract must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury that the city's capital project budget be and is hereby amended so that the funds for the projects listed in Schedule B Capital Project Fund appropriations and Schedule C Water Sewer Capital Project Fund appropriations are hereby appropriated for capital projects.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2521 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2522 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Rudisil, Mr. Ierton.
Ordinance number 2522, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2019 General Fund Budget to adjust the Salisbury Fire Department's pay plan for the purpose of recruiting and retaining experienced officers and to be competitive with area agencies, whereas the Salisbury Fire Department has need to provide firefighting personnel with personal growth and career development, and whereas the career development program provides trained and experienced firefighting personnel with skilled enhancement opportunities, and whereas this department's desire to provide every employee with the opportunity to realize professional fulfillment through personal and professional growth, and whereas the Salisbury Fire Department needs to offer a competitive salary pay scale and career advancement program to retain experienced firefighting professionals who are committed to increasing the department's ability to maintain a high level of operational readiness, and whereas an adjustment of the fire department's salary pay scales would result in better recruitment and better retention of experienced firefighting professionals, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury that the city's fiscal year 2019 adopted fire department pay scale be and hereby is amended as follows, and the amendments are those appearing as underlined in the schedule below. That's it.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2522 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2523 for the second reading.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Ierton. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance of the city to amend Chapter 8.11, the Fire Prevention Code, Sections .020 and .060 of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code by updating the reference to the State Fire Prevention Code, adding new permits that are required to be obtained from the fire marshal and replacing the enforcement and assistance requirements in 8.11.060 with third-party inspection requirements, whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement of the City of Salisbury Code demonstrates the need for periodic review, evaluation, and amendment, whereas the city adopts the State Fire Prevention Code with local amendments, and whereas the City of Salisbury wishes to prohibit open burning other than cooking and recreational fires compliant with the provisions of the State Fire Prevention Code, and whereas the City of Salisbury desires to establish and list the specific permits required from the fire marshal's office, and whereas the City of Salisbury desires to collect all third-party inspection reports through a vendor system data collection company, now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury that Chapter 8.11 of the Salisbury City Municipal Code is amended as follows. And the amendments are set forth, I read them last time, do you want me to read them this time?
No, that's fine. Essentially, what we've done is we've upgraded to the state code, correct? We match the state code now?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2523, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2524 for the second reading.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Ierton.
It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the city's water sewer capital project fund budget to reallocate bond funds previously allocated to the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project included in fiscal year 2013 bond, whereas ordinance number 2482, the fiscal year 2019 budget ordinance, included Schedule B, which created appropriations in the water sewer capital project fund for the projects listed below, and those include the pump station at $555,000, the park water treatment plan electrical gear replacement for $245,000, and water infiltration and inflow remediation for $450,000, whereas the funding for the above projects was determined to be reallocation of the existing unused bond proceeds, and whereas previously the city has not identified which projects the funding would be reallocated from, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's capital projects fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows, and below is a chart explaining where the money is coming from for those projects.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2524 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman. I would be remiss, and I would like to introduce the members of Cub Pack 185.
185.
185. The young men and young lady that are here have sat patiently through these ordinances, and to sum it all up, we spent a lot of money tonight.
duly noted.
But we thank you. Is there... Why did you come tonight? Can I ask a question? Whoever wants to answer.
Doesn't want to answer.
So we're learning about the branches of governments, and Mr. Tom thought that it would be good to reduce to this branch.
Good.
All politics is local, right?
All politics is local. Thank you very much for coming, we really, really appreciate it. I hope you learned something and you weren't too bored. I'm gonna have to go over to the podium for a second before we adjourn, so... This is a... Sort of a sad night in some ways. Quite a while ago, we had an opening because of a resignation from the council, and three young gentlemen came in, well, you're a young gentleman. And out of that group, and after the interview, and I will tell you that Mr. Rudisil was outstanding during that interview, and he certainly has lived up to his interview. However, he has submitted his resignation effective this evening, and I just wanted to take a second to tell you about how much I personally appreciate, and I know that I speak for my fellow council people, that while he doesn't say a lot, when he does, you listen and you hear, and I think that that's the sign of a very positive thinker and certainly a great contributor to the council, and I want to thank him on behalf of the council. And if you come up here, Mr. Mayor, if you could join us? And it's a little plaque, and it says, "Presented to our Hardy Rudisil in recognition and appreciation for your years of service and dedication to the community and the City of Salisbury as a member of the Salisbury City Council, October 2016 through January 2019."
For anybody who doesn't know Hardy, and I got to say this the other night, but there weren't quite so many people in the room, so I'll repeat myself, but for anybody who doesn't know Hardy, this is a guy who not only stepped up when the city council had a need, you know, he stepped up when his community had a need in volunteer capacities before that point, has been involved from the moment that I, I think, Jim, you knew he was interested in being involved, and from the moment that I knew he was interested in being involved, and has given a lot. And so, the other thing I'll say is, you've hinted at this, and I don't know if it's true, but you've hinted at this, that you're not done being involved in Salisbury as a community.
No, no, not at all.
Okay, good. But work has taken Hardy to Baltimore during the day, and it makes it difficult to continue here, and we understand, so we're proud of your accomplishments and just grateful that you continue to serve our community. Thank you.
I've never seen my name in such large font before. It was a little intimidating when I walked up to it, I said, whoa. I, you know, just contribute and give what you can, and what you get back is gonna be tenfold of what you put in, so just contribute. Whatever you have to give, give it, and thank you for this opportunity, it's been a pleasure working with all of you all, and I too have been in the most extended lesson of local government, and it was great, and I feel very educated and humbled, and thank you all so much.
What do you want us to do? Stand?
Yeah.
Great.
I know, right?
Well, then, it wouldn't be a surprise.
He just pushed him.
He said tall people on the end, but you're there, so...
And I'm definitely not a tall person.
Well, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, thank you again, Cub Pack 185. Thank you all. We are now going to adjourn this meeting, and we will go right into our work session, so the council meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thanks for coming, guys, appreciate it. Yep?
I don't even know which...
Do you have a powerpoint today?
It's your piece, or yeah. It's a lot. Not as long as I used to be.
Sure.
I'm only asking because they're gonna get the worst thing.
Are there dishes?
You wrap it?
What?
You wrap it?
Yes, you say.
Well, I can do it.
If you want, I can make it now.
It's just...
To make sure that it has made the agenda, because it's on the city website that the meeting was changed, so I apologize for anybody that is here. You're welcome to stay for the work session. Mr. Rudisil thought you were all here for him.
They were. They were.
You were. That's great.
Oh, that's classic.
And just, he was like the schoolteacher. Mister Brewer. I was like, goodness, Mister Brewer.
That was good. That was good.
Seriously.
Who should do it?
Seriously.
Uh, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
That's where you hide your chairs.
Thought the first thing was the
Look like they need some new ones.
Yeah, it does.
Or some duct tape.
See if it need a
You okay? You guys okay? Need a break?
Good.
Okay.
That's not holiday.
All right, the first item on the agenda, and I know that we have a couple of people that want to speak on it as well, the first item on the agenda is extending the single family fee moratorium. Amanda, you want to come up then?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
This is to discuss extending the single family fee moratorium. This has been in place for 24 months so far and over those past two years, we've had 39 single family properties which have obtained the fee waiver. The average fees that are waived per property is right around $6,000. It's a little bit higher if they're in the what we call the central system, kind of the older part of town because there's an additional central system line fee that can be upwards of $6,000 additional. So the average has been about $6,000. I do have a breakdown of locations and we do have a few folks that are here that would like to speak to it if you want me to invite some up.
Yes, please.
Mark Ackerman and Jamie Gladon are both here if you'd like to come up. I do want to note, it's important to note that this fee waiver is for homeowner occupied properties. These are not for rental properties and that's specified in the legislation.
Hey, Mark.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
First of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to address the council and this, what I believe is a very important bit of legislation and I'd like to commend the council for their wisdom 24 months or thereabouts ago for investing in the city of Salisbury and the opportunity for individuals to be able to purchase a new single family home and and by giving builders and developers this opportunity to pass these savings on to these potential purchasers. A little background of who I am, for those of you who may or may not know me. I'm Mark Ackerman. My company is Tiffany Property Group and in conjunction with my business partner, Skymark Real Estate Investments, we've been building and developing in the city of Salisbury for approximately 20 years such communities, mostly rentals, the Milpon Village Apartments, Milpon Plaza, Naylor Mill Road. We built the Addison Court Apartments on North Point Drive across from the Target Center. We're currently building a 288 unit apartment complex at Idlet Farm called Coventry Square which will bring our investment in the community of Salisbury to over 1,000 apartment units as well as our shopping center Hampton Inn on Naylor Mill Road and we've sold several properties to what was Toys R Us and Bob Evans and some of the other businesses along Naylor Mill Road. We're currently developing besides our Coventry Square apartments, we're developing single family lots called Hunter's Crest in Idlet Farm which Jamie's company Gladon Construction has built in and also D.R. Horton came to our community, came to Salisbury. America's largest single family home builder. I think that's a feather in Salisbury's cap and I believe a lot of the reason for that is seeing how the city of Salisbury invests in the community and gives people an opportunity to come to Salisbury and own a home. As a developer and also a builder, but predominantly as a developer in this particular moment and time of this meeting, I just want to remind everybody that although I am a developer that owns several apartment complexes in this community, I believe it's very important for a city to have single family homeownership. Ownership provides a root in the community. It it not only indicates that someone's willing to invest to live here, to take on a mortgage, to buy and own. I just think it's a it's it's something that every city should strive for and again, I I honor you with the wisdom to to see that. Many cities across the country don't always look at that as an investment in the community. A lot of people look at it and think that it's a waiver of fees that could come to the city to pay for things and I and I understand that completely. Every city needs dollars to to be able to invest and buy equipment as what tonight was the street sweepers and garbage trucks and other things that cost a lot of money and I appreciate that, but I think it's a small investment in a in the future of the city by by offering people an opportunity and I and I know, at least speaking from the builders that I am familiar with, these savings are being passed on to the individual, to the to these homeowners and I think that makes Salisbury competitive. You've got, you know, you've got Delaware nearby that that offers a lot of incentives and it's a lot of builders will tell you it's it's, you know, much less expensive for them to go to Delaware and build and a lot of home buyers will buy in Delaware for those reasons and I think by offering this type of incentive, it helps to grow the community and I think it's just very important and I won't go on and on, but I appreciate and I appreciate the opportunity to address you and and again, I congratulate you for for being this forward thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Guys, thanks for having us. A little background about me, lived in the area my whole life. We started working with Mark and his family almost 20 years ago when when Milpon was built and then we came across single family lots and we got re-involved with with Mark, you know, two years ago. I can speak intimately about the 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 waiver as I built, we built five, we built and sold five houses in 2018 and and like Mark said, those, you know, savings were passed directly to our our home buyers and now that I'm kind of more in the development phase, I, you know, I see that and I see the costs associated with development and and home building and like Mark said, Delaware's, you know, a few miles away from us and, you know, we also have the county to deal with. Leave that alone, but but we generally gets passed right to the homeowner and 39 houses, right? 39 houses in two years and before that.
Very few.
Very few, yeah, so, you know, that played a large part in in our in our corner, you know, that market.
Thank you. Anything else?
Can I say one other thing? I'm sorry to
That's all right.
Continue to keep speaking, but I I'd be remiss not to say that we we are currently about to pick up permits. We are, we're developing another 28 lots, single family lots at the Hunter's Crest Community which are going to be built by D.R. Horton and and we're in the engineering stages of another property, Johnson's Retreat, which is another 75 single family lots. And just want to let you know, I mean, these these are major investments for us and I would I would recommend or I I would say that 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 a year at a time is is although it's very generous and and it's appreciated, I would recommend that you go beyond a year and and look even further into the future. It's within the boards, the councils purview to to extend it beyond the one year because it 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 takes a long time as anyone who's been in the development business and the city of Salisbury is wonderful and Amanda's department is great, but it takes eight or nine months to bring a property through permitting and then another three, four, five months to develop. So by the time you start to the time you're actually delivering single family lots for home builders to build, you're already over a year into the process before they can even start building, so just thought I'd throw that out there.
Any other questions?
One of the reasons I initially supported this was to get us over the hump from the end of the Great Recession. When we take 6,000 per unit over 39, it'll add up, but I still think we can afford our street sweepers and and trucks of that nature. But when we talk about what's left to do just out on 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 the Collector Road and 75 more that you're going to apply for, then we get into what are the other things that have to be provided, the services that have to be provided for more single family homes. These ones that are, you know, that are River, Snow Hill Road, Priscilla, Prince, Rose, Lakeside, we have the capacity with our public works department and our police department and our fire department to handle that. I think that's already in in the in the calculation of everything we do. But if we start looking at 75 more here or 100 more there, you significantly increase the 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 population, certainly in District One and in District Five in the city. And then I start to worry about whether or not we have the man and woman power in each of our departments to cover the continued out to where our growth is slated to stop in our comprehensive plan. So though I can vote for it tonight, I do not agree we should do it any longer than one year simply because if more comes on, I need to know response times for fire department trucks and I need to know response times for police department trucks and I need to know how much curb and gutter is going to be needed to, you know, to 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 be put there, whether or not we have the infrastructure underneath the ground to do that. So I can support it tonight, but I would not support going any further than one year. Essentially, these 39 are in two developments for the most part, one to the west of the city and then one to the east of the city.
In in the city, but
They're in, oh definitely, they're in the city and
The majority.
The Marian developments that were halted because of because of the Great Recession, so I'm happy to see the the build out here. I was going to get more specific about asking questions about average home prices and exactly what that discount was because you're a businessman and I'm a person of politics, so there's wordsmiths, wordsmithing that goes on and we have a lawyer right here on his first night, so he can jump in anytime he wants to. I don't know whether or not you'd have to show me on paper the discount that you gave to the homeowner in terms of what the 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 average cost was. I don't know what they will, what the average cost will be in Sassafras Meadows. I don't know what the average cost will be over on the on the Northeast Collector Road. But did it generate a $6,000 cut in the home price for each one of those?
I can only speak as a developer and a builder myself and when we run our budgets and we run line item budgets and they're very extensive, if that $6,000 wasn't waived, it would be added to the budget. There is a profit margin that any builder or developer is going to want to maintain and therefore if there's $6,000 more on the top, it's gonna it's gonna be reflected in the bottom.
Then When do you suggest as the expert in your field that we stop doing this because the economy has taken over and allowed houses to be sold at the market price? This is your, these are your lines. This is what you like to talk about, the market, what the market will bear. How long would you suggest to us, even if we just did it for a year at a time? Certainly you take the break anywhere. I get that you're a businessman. How long would you suggest that we keep this up?
I would suggest humbly that the return on the investment, although it may be $6,000 on the front end, is going to be far exceeded in the back end. And since I am a developer and we are long range planners, that's just the nature of our business. Nothing is done quickly in the development industry or in the construction industry. It, everything takes its normal course of time. But I, again, I would suggest, I I don't have that magic how long it should go. I can only suggest that a $6,000 on the front end and receiving real estate tax income on the back end from the city and the and the plumber who gets to go to work and the electrician who gets to go to work and the carpenter and the roofer and the guy who sells drywall and lumber. The numbers become staggering as you look at the domino effect. So if you, sure, if you only look at it as I've made a $6,000 waiver and I haven't received that income today, but what is my return tomorrow, the next year, five years, 10 years? Besides the fact of someone committing to the city of Salisbury not to be a renter, but to be a homeowner with a 30-year mortgage, I think that the 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 returns are staggering. Now, I don't have the exact dollars to tell you and I can't tell you how long it's going to be. I wish I had all those answers. I probably wouldn't be sitting here. But I can tell you that, but I can tell you without any hesitation that the investment is small in comparison to the return and as someone who looks for investment and return on a daily basis, if I could invest $6,000 and know that I was going to get multiple returns over the next 10 or 20 years as we do when we build rental apartments, I would tell you that it's a it's a small investment for a large return and that's why I
You know, you had mentioned your concern about increasing the costs. Well, for the first time since I was on the council, we have now increased our revenue stream on an annual basis when those houses are occupied.
I'm going to vote for this and we'll take Hardy out for beer to celebrate this and we'll argue about it then.
We'll debate it. We'll debate it then.
The only point that I'll make is is part of the issue that we went this route was at the time was the where the state had implemented the regulation for the fire suppression systems in the homes, which in the city it averaged about $6,000 to $7,000 and the county it's a lot more because those systems aren't connected to a central, a central system. So I think this was, some of these homes, this was a point that priced people out of the mortgage was was the tipping point for a lot of it and this was the one, that was, when that happened, we had nothing that following year, if maybe one, and the county had zero once that went into effect. So, you know, we were at a point when this happened, we were starting to come out of the recession because stuff was being built, but this, that regulation put a halt to home building in the city, which was part of the conversation two years ago when we did this.
Yeah. Okay. I think we know where everybody stands. So if I could, do we have consensus to move this? We have consensus.
With a one-year extension.
With a one-year. That's what that was what was requested, correct?
We had asked for a two-year, but if if we want to, the the resolution we had put forward
Resolution, what's
Was actually for the first time to extend it for two years, but if the discussion is one year, we had done it in the last two years as one year and then another one year. This was the first time we were seeking a two-year, but
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor. Just my opinion. What's your opinion? Well, I kind of just wanted to speak to the general, you know, the program in general, but I mean, I know we've
But I mean, I know we've got consensus on the program, but, you know, it's, it's kind of an interesting, this is an interesting policy discussion. I, I don't think we would have this conversation at all if it were about apartment housing. And I think, and the reason why is, the market doesn't, isn't asking for it. You know, it's, there's nothing that indicates that we have any need to incentivize apartment development, you know, and, you know, I'm, I'm certain saying that out loud could slowly mean that the spigot gets turned off on, on all that work, and I hope not, but, you know, it's, it's one of those things that you look at it. We are the fastest-growing city in Maryland. We've had a decade of fast population growth, almost all of that in rental apartments. And so if homeownership is a policy that we want to incentivize or, or support, then I think we got to find ways to do that, and, and I know that we have, and that's what this is. But there, there's just a couple other interesting things that I think we should think about. And one is the construction jobs impact. We've had over 200 permanent construction jobs added to the Salisbury market, just, just in the Wycomica County portion of the Salisbury market in the last two years. And, and obviously, homes are a part of that. Also, watching property values grow, I mean, we saw over $62,000 in revenue from this program, just in tax, real estate taxes, and that's every year. And they, it's growing, grew 11% this year, the assessments. And so I think there's, you know, that, that long-term play, you know, the long-term trajectory to pay for those services is there. You know, the, the, the short-term upfront capital cost is, is a question, and that's kind of where the trade-off is, to your point, Jim. The, the second thing is, there, there are people in elected office around us that are sounding the alarm bell right now, and I think it, it should not be ignored by us. And they're sounding the alarm bell because we are absorbing a lot of the development energy for the Lower Shore. And if you listen to what's being said, both outside of the city here, and what's being said in Worcester County, and what's being said in Sussex County right now, it should give us a lot of hope that, you know, we're going to break away from that pack. You know, one, because we have, but two, I want to see that sustainable. You know, that, I want to see our economy continue to shine, regardless of what happens in 2019, 2020, you know, hoping, again, that things remain strong. But regardless of what happens, I think we can overcome that if we make the right policy decisions, or at least survive it better than our neighbors are going to. Because there's a lot of hand-wringing going on about the lack of development in the rural areas around us. And right now, we're not seeing any lack of, of development. And I'd like to see, make sure that there's a robust housing mix, so that people have the option of wherever they're, whatever they're looking for, they can find it here. They don't have to choose, you know, Milton or Lewis or, you know, Bridgeville or Berlin, they can choose Salisbury. That's, that's one of the reasons why I, you know, I support this. The, the only comment I have to make on the two-year thing is, you know, I can't pretend to understand how investment decisions are made and how long-term trajectory is calculated for a, a person in the business of real estate development. But when, when I'm told, you know, hey, if you want to see that, that kind of growth, here is how these investment decisions are made, and here's what we need in order to have confidence in your market, that it will be there, and that this is a part of the mix for the long term, that's the reason that I would encourage her, that I support the two-year extension. Again, I'm not the expert on that front, but I, I, I believe what I'm hearing there and want to make sure that we're creating an environment of confidence. You know, I think nobody invests in an environment of chaos, that's when cities fall apart, that's when communities fall apart, and an environment of, of confidence, that's, that's what we need. Now, I, I think you can create that one way or the other on this policy decision. I don't think it's the end of the world, but, you know, my personal opinion is that it would create more confidence.
Mayor?
One more thing, real quick. The, the subdivision that Mark talked about, Johnson's Retreat, the 75 single-family, is a current platted subdivision. It was another one that started and then stopped in the, in the recession, and that was over 10 years ago. And the reason they can't just come in and start building is stormwater regulations have changed, you know, sprinkler systems, everything else, but stormwater itself has changed, which is making them have to relook at that entire land plan. So it's not just as easy as picking up an abandoned subdivision and just picking and starting right back. The water and sewer is designed, but stormwater is a complete redesign. So there is time associated with getting that approved and designed and whatnot. So that is part of why I think for, I, I can see their perspective of wanting to know that they have that, that two-year window.
Amanda, do you have any idea how many more on the Northeast Collector Road are scheduled to come in in the next two years?
Actually, I think the 28 next, the phase in Hunter's Crest is the last in Hunter's Crest, is that correct?
Yes, that finishes Hunter's Crest.
So that finishes the single-family portion of Hunter's Crest. So that's it in that area. The, the rest of that development is not necessarily single-family. We haven't gotten past...
Not only townhomes.
Right, yeah, townhomes. But that doesn't, this has to be detached, single-family, so townhomes wouldn't apply.
Which I do support, townhomes as well, by the way.
The whole other thing.
It's homeownership.
You did that beautiful development up there, and you're going to remind me of that every night we give them.
And, and to the, to the mayor's point, just, and again, I keep speaking without being offered the opportunity, but please, please, don't, don't hesitate. But, but to the, to the mayor's point, that, that apartment housing doesn't need incentives, I remember at the opening of, of our Addison Court Apartments, we were talking, my partner Stan and I, and we went outside, and I believe you addressed Stan and said, well, how is it possible that other builders are having all these problems?
You can remember this.
And you guys are able to come in here and build this, these 300 units? And it was because the county, actually, at the time, was waiving the school fees and so forth, and it saved us over a million dollars. And at that time, we looked at that plan, and we said, you know what? This is a perfect opportunity. There's a million dollars being offered for us to come in, and we wanted to do the project anyway, and we did it. The same thing with Coventry Square, the, the, the fees have been waived for, for the school. That was, I think, 1,500 or $1,800 per unit, putting up almost 300 units, that's a half a million dollars. I mean, those...
Gee, I know, I shouldn't have said it.
Those type of, those type of incentives are what motivated developer to come into a community and do work. I, it's just, it's just a fact of life.
I appreciate that. I will simply say to you, I will support, I will probably support the two-year, but when you leave here in 20 minutes and the CIP comes, there's a police chief sitting in the back of the room who will tell you the reason that she needs 10 new cars is because the amount of miles that our police officers put on cars due to the growth. 20 years ago, buses in our county for schools carried more students, and today they drive over 500,000 more miles than they did then because of this. So if the world were the place we wanted, I'd get you, I'd get five police cars out of you before you walked out of here tonight. I'd get one dump truck out of Mr. Gladno there, and I'd get a couple things for the Fire Department, because I would hope that what we would look at is when the economy picks up enough that this is not particularly needed anymore. That's all. I can support whatever we do tonight, but I think a larger discussion of the number of miles on police cars and the number of miles on, on vehicles is important.
Like you said, the two-year gives like a stability, but if we come out of it, you know, it shouldn't just be, oh, boom, the next year it's back to the full thing. We could do a phase-in back up instead of, instead of just hitting it at one time.
Well, do we? What would you like? And we'll take a vote.
We did request two years, so that would be preferable, especially for projects like this that take a little while.
Can we, can you support two years?
Two.
Can you? Can you?
Of course I can.
Reluctantly, two, we got it. Okay, you got two years.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thanks very much. CIP, my favorite topic.
So any of the department heads bring cookies?
I'm going to sit over here, so...
Nope.
Yes.
I'm starving.
Oh, we better be a good night for them after what we just did for bad.
I'm starving.
Okay, my friends, we're all, we're all into a best of week.
Mr. Corddry, good evening.
Good evening.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Can we jump right in? Okay. So, good evening. It's always a joy to be here to talk about the CIP. You know, this is, I think, one of the things that we have collectively done a great job of working to modernize, tighten up, and align to the realities of what we can afford in our budget. As, as you all may recall, we have, at times, especially if you go back to the early 2000s, projected expenditures of huge amounts of money for many, many projects per year. And, you know, tightening that up was, has been a priority for the last six, seven years or so. And I think if you look back over tho, those years, it has become a more realistic document. It's something that Mayor Irtin, you talked about, and that we've continued to talk about under my administration. The, the CIP also, I think, a lot of credit needs to go to Keith and his team, but also Chris Demone, and the work that they've done to make this a, a more legible document, easy to understand. So Chris, Chris's design skills have played a significant role there. The last thing I'll say is that in terms of the, the use of, the use of dollars in our forthcoming year, in fiscal year '20, we've continued to try to narrow that down to what we really can afford, which, as you all know, we've been trying to keep that to less than a $1.6 million range. That's what we've been trying to get down to in the last few years. And, you know, proud that this, this CIP continues to make progress in that direction. The, the last thing I'll say is that I think we have a good bit of information readily available with respect to the financial health of the city, and anything you want to hear tonight, I know you're going to hear it again during Budget Session, but anything you want to hear tonight, Mr. Corddry, I'm sure is prepared to address. With that being said, you know, I, I think we can continue, we can do this like we've done it in recent years, and kind of pause for, for questions and let you kind of lead with what your questions are. You know, otherwise, I think the document kind of speaks for itself, but any, anything you'd like us to hone in on, our department heads are here and stand ready, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have as well. Oh, and one last thing. The other thing that continues with this document is the integration of the adopted plans of the city, and ensuring that thematically those are, those have a thread in here that is captured, and that includes the Urban Greenway Plan, the City Park Master Plan, the Bike Master Plan, the Downtown Master Plan, and the Route 13 Corridor Study. So each of those continues to influence this document and give us a, a clear transition from plan to implementation. So want, want to make sure that you know we're not ignoring those efforts and not letting anything sit on the shelf. So where would you like to begin?
To begin? I, I think the, from my perspective, if we just, I have a couple of general questions, I think that would, I can remember our first discussions when we started talking several years ago. And one of the things that we were talking and we had an issue with was the recurring capital, just as the, the equipment for the Fire Department, the automobiles for the Police Department. And, and if you remember when we started, we would get hit with this. We need X number of cars now. And we said, well, we had done that over a period of time where you do five, 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 whatever the number is. Are we there yet?
Yes. So we, we have spent significant time and effort planning, working by department to plan out the acquisition of, in a, a much more level sense of, especially rolling stock. The one big exception is with the Fire Department, and that's not any failure on the Fire Department's part. It really has to do with the fact that because we lease many of those items, when they come off of our, come off of our budget, they are replaced, or when the lease comes off, they're replaced by the new vehicles coming on. So you'll see three ambulances acquired at once, and this is, I think it was ambulances that drove that conversation.
Because it was one where we had, I forget what it was, early on, years ago, five or six.
So we looked at, we looked, we looked at doing one per year, and this is over the last couple of years, and it just doesn't make economic sense. And we end up actually spiking, increasing our lease costs, the cost per unit, because we're not buying them collectively. And I think I'll, I'll, I'll reserve any more detail for our chief or our finance director, because I'm going to run into thin ice there.
You know, always, always get to the experts.
Yep.
Questions, general questions?
Do you want to bring specific departments or just...
We can, what we, what we did was, any questions you had on, on a particular department, bring it up and then we'll...
Well, besides the, the whole bond, and of course, that'll go into, into Budget Session as well.
Yep.
How much bonded did we get? I did have a couple of questions about the structural repairs for the, for the, because there's another half a million dollars in there, but I did get a, what language would you say that was in that? But there is a sheet available from the procurement office that explains all that, and I can get that in greater detail, even though she was sweet enough to bring it to me after the last question. But that would be, that would mean s, almost three-quarters of a million dollars just this year for the parking garage. And I just, I'm not saying that's wrong or right, or, there's some stuff for Bill Garrett, since he's here and my computer's on, I'll say I'm going to vote for it now, just because he's here.
Your computer will remain on.
My, my computer will remain on through the night. I did have a question about the, the much-needed and incredible moving forward of the, the fire station up north, and reducing the, the, the time and the cost. It says contribution, is that from the volunteers to purchase property? What is, what is that? And I wish I could tell you what it's from, and, and, Bill, this is not you, this is Chris Demone, when you click back, mine goes all the way back out to the beginning of CIP, so I have to continually scroll up and scroll down.
Yeah, so let me go to contributions. There it is. So the $395,000, you know, yeah, you want to come up and speak to that? You want to join us?
So I was just thinking, Chief, the gentleman who was just here, who did the apartment complexes, I think Tom Stevenson and I tried to convince him a couple of years back to give us some land, right as you got into that particular, so that we could put this particular building, and I think it was with police as well, is how we envisioned it, but however you all envisioned it, is that, is that what's happening now?
Yeah, that 395 is a land donation, trying to find a piece of property based on a size, how many acres we would need to put a fire station, and based on a value that, I think we got the number then from Chris Jakubiat, of, of a value associated with land and a donation, and that's where that 395 comes from.
And Councilman Irtin, to, to that question, there's a, there's a couple properties that are in play, and without revealing too much in public, but in closed session, there's a couple properties that I think could play into that strategy, some that are readily available. The other thing that I think is worth noting is next work session, next week, I think we have three, we have multiple annexation discussions, one of which could play a role in conversations about, not necessarily the North End in land, but at least contributions toward those sorts of calls.
Is the Police Department included in that particular up there?
I, I think, depending on what we, what's available, that, that public... I, I think, depending on what we, what's available, that public safety building that was originally drawn up, and I think you, you led an effort that created a concept.
I know more about a Sally Court than you will ever know in the midst of those conversations.
There you go. I, I, I think that remains open, kind of based on our collective feelings about substation strategy and what the chief recommends, and I, I don't think there's any closed doors in that regard.
And the only other question I have, besides the bonded, and Keith, you can do that during budget, is how much has the, the enterprise zone, our stormwater utility is now starting to return some, and I was just wondering how much we had collected that we were putting towards these projects. Am I correct that that's the enterprise zone we're talking about in that area, is the stormwater utility?
Enterprise fund.
Yeah. Because I'm glad those things are in there. I did have a short concern about buying a truck with it, but if you all think it, if operations believes that somehow that helps the quality of the water, I'll...
It does. So, our, our stormwater utility brings in right around $600,000 of revenue each year, and that, that has been increasing some. Street sweeping is about half of it, but it has a tremendous impact. And we're actually now in our first year of our new MS4 permit, and I'll be seeking time to come and speak to you soon about what that permit means. We have an impervious area restoration requirement, and street sweeping is significant. Every dime we are spending is a huge impact on that restoration requirement. I actually just got numbers last week that were staggering. So, I am all in favor of that budget amendment for the street sweeper, because it is, it is really helping us tremendously meet our goals. So, I had asked Keith recently how we were doing with a surplus now that we've had three years of stormwater utility. I don't have the exact number, but it was a little bit less than $100,000. I think we had like 85 or something like that as a surplus. So, we've been doing well managing our expenses in that account and trying to fully utilize them every year. And we, for the, there's the street sweeping half, and then the other half is designing projects, trying to implement some small projects, any storm drain repairs that we have in the city, dues to the, the MAMSA organization. So, so we have, we have a small pot of money, but we're managing it well and have a little bit of a surplus in there.
On the street sweeping, every street in Salisbury is swept?
Twice a month.
Twice a month.
Now, that being said, that was a policy goal that we pushed hard to achieve and have been able to pull off. There is a line of thinking that begs the question, is that getting us the most bang for our buck? Does every street equally impact runoff? So, from a, from a customer service, I want to see the streets swept in front of my house twice a month if that's how many miles you're going to cover a month. Sure, accomplished. From a, could we actually get more bang for a buck if we swept every week on Fitzorder? And, you see what I'm saying?
Well, that's what I was trying to get to. There, there is a strategic approach.
Well, and so the state, the way the state used to look at it from a stormwater perspective is you would get credits if you swept every street twice a month. They have completely changed that mentality now to actual tonnage that you're sweeping. So, Field Operations is doing a great job segregating that street sweeping material, and our credits are based off the actual tonnage that they're getting every month. So, it really does give us that flexibility to sweep some areas more frequently, some less frequency. But that twice a month came from a state, a state guidance document, which is now completely changed.
But I'm guessing that citizens are still going to want to see some regular areas, some commitment of it, you know, my street ought to be swept at least this often. So, I think, I think we have to balance those two things.
You do, because in my district, I can tell you that there are streets that need to get swept. I don't want to say constantly, but could be swept constantly. And there are developments that...
Don't need it as much.
Just don't need it as much. I mean, I don't know how you, there's got to be a program or a logarithm that's seriously...
Predicted pollution.
I mean, you know, who, who talks to the street sweeper?
Right.
I mean, he's going to be able to tell you.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. I mean, so that's where you start with a guy doing it. Okay. That's just my, I didn't mean to start...
No, no, it's, I think it's a, I think it's a really good discussion to have.
Okay.
I don't know exactly, you know, how we design that or if anything exists, but maybe we can reach out to MML and see if anybody has a better answer than we do.
What was this year's grant total? This year's grant total?
Capital?
Capital. Do you remember? I don't remember.
The added sign fund balance was 750, 750,000.
750,000.
7.5 million, sorry.
Seven, yeah.
Yeah, 750,000.
Okay.
We got it back up to, that was a previous placeholder that we had, and we were happy to get it there.
Okay. Big difference from where we started years ago.
So, the other, the other thing I'll point out is just, if you, if you look for any outlier, if you go to page 14, so Detail Project List by Funding Source, page four of seven, and if you're looking for any outlier, the outlier is, is in FY '21, sort of, with the, just, just the bond expense. I mean, we, you know, we, we've gotten the general fund revenue and really all of the other areas down to a relatively flat plan. And, and we got really close the last, last year to the same, although this pairs it down even more. But the, the upside, the only upside of having a little bit more than, say, 1.6 million in a, in a given year in the CIP in terms of general fund revenue years ahead is it gives us some things to consider and options, especially when sometimes projects, you know, are, are either sold. And one of the things that we see almost every year is that our paving contracts come in under, and we're able to stretch further and usually pick up a street from the next year and get it done in the year. And, and that helps so that we can pull some of those things off and save a little bit of money. And then, but the outlier again is FY '21 bond, that's 6.865 million, just a little higher than the, the other years. But I think if you look at, if you look at where that money's going or what the difference maker is, you know, the field operations, facility plan, execution, you know, one, there are ways that we can stretch that out a little bit. But two, if you look at its impact over, you know, in terms of debt, it's better, we end up being better off just doing it in the same year. And then, the, the third thing is, when you hear about the specifics of each of the, the projects and the justification for why it ought to be done and the order that it's being recommended, it ends up being better. Now, again, I don't think that's a, an issue for this year, but it's going to be an issue we have to discuss next year.
Yeah. I've asked them to do the, remember that we did the financial health thing, that first sheet, to give us an idea, and we, we talked about, we're going to talk about debt and trends and those things. And I think that we're going to, that certainly helped me last year. I don't know if it helped everybody else, but it helped me. And I think that that's where we're going to start. But, yeah, the only thing that I saw was the, next year's going to be a little... Compared to where we were.
Next year will, will take us closer to where we've been the last few in terms of bond, because of the Main Street master plan project.
I'm going to throw a curveball.
Go ahead.
Traffic control.
Yes.
See some, you know, some of these hotspots. One, maybe we should put on our radar is the Main Street, Mount Herman Road, Long Avenue, Truitt Street, seven different directions that you could go. Is there something that maybe we can, are we looking or talking about something like that?
Yeah. So, State Highway came in when I was on council and made a presentation of their plan. They, they control the intersection. So, they came in and made a presentation, Donnie Drewer had drawings. So, they spent some money. Now, whether or not they would expect that to be a partnership in terms of cost, I have no idea. They haven't been pushing it, which I'm guessing says that they're not going to drive it from a funding standpoint. I did talk to Greg Slater, the Administrator of State Highway today, about the work that they're doing along Route 13, stormwater management, the new bridge, the trail, all of that, and the removal of the billboards. I, I think we've got a willing partner right now. So, I think if we were ever going to ask, now's the time to ask while we have leaders in a, in a position at State Highway where they're, they're kind of saying, what do you want? You know, what can we do for you? It's, it's a good, good feeling, a good moment at State Highway, so we, we might want to ask.
Okay. Because it's, it's a regular question.
Now, I will say, we, we just upgraded the signal, right? We just upgraded the signal.
That's made a huge, that's made a huge difference.
You know, and I say they control it. I think it's only because two state, at least one state road goes through there, but, Mount Herman. But, but I think they also control portions of the roads that connect from right there.
Well, because it's like right into the highway.
You know, from a plowing standpoint, things like that, paving standpoint. But the, the, we went to the camera signal sensor versus what was in the road, which, you know, was not always effective.
It's just, you know, the issue is when you're waiting to turn.
Yeah.
If you're, you know, there's limited options sometimes on turning.
There's another thing I wanted to point out on that front.
But the Northwood Drive, Nellam Road, that's a long time coming.
It's, yeah. And, and I think, you know, that, that's one that we really have to think about from a design standpoint. You know, is there a, a signal-free solution there? Or does it require a signal? So, there's, there's going to be a design and engineering cost there to, to assess that one.
Marty?
Is it possible? We'll find out.
Yeah.
And the, and the other thing is that we've heard from the, the traffic team that we need to do some replacement of the, the traffic signal equipment that we have around the city, you know, over the next coming years. So, you'll see that as a, a line in the budget. It, some years may be less than the, the capital amount, but, but you'll see us, there, there's going to be a need to start replacing some of that equipment over the coming years.
Are we going to try to standardize the, the equipment?
Yes. Yes. And they, they have the ability to also install it. The equipment that, that Tom's team, that Billy's team, you know, would recommend that we use, they have the ability to install it too. Time-consuming, but we can do it. Saves us money.
Yeah.
What else?
Any, any other questions? I will tell you, this is getting, I mean, this is, this presentation, I think, is, is maximized right now from where it used to, used to be. And hopefully, the, the rest of it will go...
Have fun back in the day.
Yeah, but by the time you found what you were looking for...
1,750 pages.
The environment thanks us.
It was a, it was a longer document.
That is true.
I still have, you know where it is in my house? It's holding the door open in my office. Okay.
You know, I, I think, you know, what I'd like to see moving forward is that it continues kind of a, a level, flat, no surprises path for...
Yeah, that's nice.
I think we're getting there. To the credit of the police department, fire department, field operations, and waterworks, I mean, with their vehicles in particular, that's, that's, that's where we had the potential for the most flummox. And I think it's going to be important that we keep that as steady as possible.
Yeah. Good.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Talking to me. What am I doing here? Okay, I think that that, that covers it. We do have a, believe it or not, we have a closed session tonight, after this session, so... But while, while we're here, I would like to publicly, Chief, congratulations on the figures for the year.
Thank you, sir.
Really impressive.
From everybody in this room, and of course, you know, everybody back in the D and the city as well.
Really impressive. Really impressive. Okay. With that, we are adjourned, and I'll entertain a motion. Give me a second here. Entertain a motion to enter into closed session. Mr. Boda. And for the last time, Mr. Rudis. What time, what time do we have? 7:45?
Yes.
7:45. Tom, could you ask the chief to wait a second, please?
And to also check your background.
All those in favor of entering closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
You're the lawyer, you tell me. Read it fast, read it fast. There's going to be a lot of lawyers in this closed session, isn't there? One, two, three.
We have just come out of a closed session, and the purpose was to obtain advice on a legal matter and also to update the council on a contract negotiation. If there's no more... Business?
We also discussed the possible purchase of property.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. We did. We also discussed the potential purchase of a piece of property. Anything else? With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.